I just want to remind everyone that this is actually a council meeting. So to begin it, thank you for coming. And moved by Council McVay, second by Council McDonald, if that's okay. Be it resolved that the special council meeting at the Corporation of the Township of Naranheimen of July fourteen, twenty twenty five is now open at seven oh four, no, six oh four P M., all in favor? It's Carrie. And then Counselor Austin, will you move the next? And second by Council McDonald, moved by Counselor Austin, second by Counselor McDonald, be it resolved that? No, that's adjourning. We are not adjourning.
It's no, it's for the purpose of this session.
Okay, be it resolved that the special council meeting is now adjourned at seven oh five P M. Six oh five P M. For the purpose of a public meeting, all in favor? It's Carrie. Well, thank you, everyone, for coming on this beautiful summer evening in July fourteen, and taking time out of your schedule, we're going to much rather be doing something more exciting, but I just want to remind everyone that we can be polite and civil to not have interruptions. Everyone won't have a chance to make comments or have their answers. Or have their questions answered. I know we all feel passionately about this. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? So I'm going to-
Can you explain what you just said?
Oh, a pecuniary interest is if someone has a conflict where they're making money, and it is specifically council.
Understood.
So to start with, I would like to acknowledge our- Her name, Lloyd, if you could stand, and she was with an environmental group, York Watch, and has been with this issue for a long time, but and M P P France Jeanne. We're so grateful for their attendance and supporting us in this matter. It's a really big deal. So I just want to start by doing a quick little recap of why we're here and get it louder.
Yes.
I think she showed them, Michael.
What's on? You can't hear, sir? Okay. Hello, hello, I guess if I get closer, I'm gonna talk like that. Don't make fun of me. So Counselor Austin, way from the front, Counselor Austin was traveling on the back roads in July twenty twenty four, when he noticed that they were very nice. They were newly developed and upgraded, and he thought that there might be something going on that we didn't know about. It took us a little bit, but by June seventeenth, we received an email that was less than a page and a half with a very brief outline that eighteen thousand cubic meters of naturally occurring radioactive material would be coming to our Agnew Lake tailings area. We did not feel that we had been consulted in any way. The government would tell us that that less than a page and a half email was a false allegation. Just go closer, Andy.
Bring the mic down so close to you.
Hello? Hello? Okay, so just to recap, we found really nice logging roads. And by June seventeen, twenty twenty four, we got an email of less than a page and a half with a very brief outline saying that we would receive eighteen thousand cubic metric tons of naturally occurring radioactive material. We really felt that we hadn't been consulted, and the government at that point has referred to it, that that short email was a consultation. At this point, we were getting more information from the First Indigenous Nations website. There was a meeting in August with myself and C A O Ketchabah, right? Where we were told that the naturally occurring radioactive material was just like gravel. And that radioactivity, for instance, is in the rock and it can't possibly leach into water. There was significant environmental health and safety concerns, and we were really concerned about our drinking water. Seepage from tailings into the groundwater has been documented, raising further alarms about long-term harm. Over the last year, working with Baldwin, Salmo Spanish River Townships, and the town of Espinola, so our La Plaush communities, we've had two emergency meetings, public information sessions with the Ministry of Mines and the M T O and the C N S C, with Navy Nuclear Safety Commission, political leaders, and First Nation groups. This is not norm, this is not naturally occurring radioactive material. What it is, is a mine tailing. So it contains hazardous heavy metals, uranium, niobium, radium two-two-six, cadmium, arsenic, selenium, silver, and manganese. Now, we have received answers to our questions in this very large binder that we have received from the M T O and the Ministry of Mines. And tonight, that's what we're coming to deliver to you, answers to questions that we've all been asking since September eleventh, when we had our town hall. Because the information is very heavy scientifically, we had to take it to an environmental consulting firm, and they helped us wade through it and figure out what exactly some of it meant. And tonight, we're going to share this information with you, and we want your feedback. We want to know what you want us to do next. I'm gonna bring up the white paper. So this is the answer to our September eleventh town hall. Are we ready to go?
Sorry, this is focusing right there, not on you. Just gonna try to- There we go.
I'm gonna try to move pretty quickly because these are boring and pretty routine, but there is some interesting stuff, so. Hang on to your hats. Will there be a health and safety plan? Not a surprise. Yes, there will be. And radiation protection plan. Number two, will ongoing communication consultation? Yes, there will be ongoing communication and consultation, but I want to remind you, these are the same people that sent us a page and a half email to inform us that a bajillion tons, that's not accurate, but a lot of tailings were coming to our backyard. So although these, yeah, I've said enough, I'm a little bit cynical about communication. Number three, will norm tailings material be the only contaminating material disposed of? They are saying that it will be the only contaminated. That we will only be accepting the norm from Bokage Mine. I want to point out, this is not a legal document. They are not, we cannot at this point control what they bring in now. So I don't know why we would be surprised if something else was brought in down the road. This is no guarantee. Okay, number four, will the license issued to the Ministry of Mines be reviewed and resigned and revised to increase protection? There will be semi-annual monitoring. It will exceed the requirement of the waste nuclear substance license. It only requires annual surface monitoring. It confirms that surface water's quality returns to acceptable conditions. The people that we have taken our information to, Hutchinson Environmental, would say differently. I have these details, we have talked about them previously in town halls. If you want those details, just approach me, or they're also on our website. There is no evidence indicating that Ultima negatively affects water chemistry and quality in Agnew Lake or this sort of water in the immediate surrounding areas. Also Hutchinson would have the same thing to say about that, sorry. Licenses are subject to submit annual reports to the commission. This is available to the public. And the annual report is available March thirty first of the following year. Has there been any reported health effects within the St. First Nations? This also comes up later with another group, not that they know of, but they- Hi, Neil. Then we have another giant question. You're so, as long as states, we will never compromise on safety, but the tailings area were exposed with levels each time higher than that was considered safe. Why did the commission not enforce the licensee to remediate the issues immediately? Why are we here ten years later with an even bigger problem, ignoring the issues since two thousand and fifteen is the management not informing the surrounding residents of the higher radiation levels is negligent. There was a fat saying, that's my words. Why were community members not informed that the site was below expectations? And if we go to the answer, I did not highlight anything because I really did not feel they actually answered the question. So there is ongoing sites inspections and sampling, but where can we find the annual inspections? That's a lot like number five. Health effects for the St. First Nations, that's similar again. Then they're talking about the bridge, and why are we having long-term access? Is there a plan to continue using the location to store other radioactive garbage for the province? And they say here Ultima will only accept the naturally occurring radioactive material originating from Bokage Mine. But again, this is not a guarantee. This is not- we have no control over what goes there now. Ultima was designed and created to store radioactive material from the decommissioned mine that was in the area, not as a storage unit for radioactive material for other locations. Continually adding to this pile of cancer-causing substances from other areas with no idea of the capacity of the tailings pond, effectiveness of the procedure without proper testing is negligent. Modeling shows that niobium rock tailings aren't effective material to help repair the existing cover. A human health ecological risk assessment confirmed that the risk of metals leaching from the norm material into the environment is low. We are talking about radium two-two-six that has a half-life of sixteen hundred years. Cadmium, arsenic, selenium, silver, manganese. As a government-funded project, why was this project not posted for tender? The contract was procured following the process under Ontario's indigenous procurement program. Now I'm gonna share a little bit of the rest of the story. First of all, that we want to thank the U C C M M for their longstanding support as a First Nations group, and they've been very valuable. When we all became aware of the situation at the St. First Nations and possible trucking of the niobium tailings to our area, we had very strong interest and support from surrounding First Nations. But suddenly, within a month, our emails and our phone calls were not answered. What First Nations company had received this substantial, possibly millions, contract? It doesn't matter. All the First Nations communities who suddenly did not answer our calls and emails are involved. And I would like to ask the First Nation company that did get the contract, what have you been told? Do you have the same information that we have? Do you know more? Do you have the missing eight environmental studies? Did you have the information seven months ago, when we didn't have any information? Did you investigate the environmental and health risks for your employees, the land, the water, yourself? Or with environmental experts? And I would now call upon all surrounding First Nation communities to stand with us, to protect the environment, to keep the land as pure and clean as it always has been, and to stop the dumping of mine tailings in our small, old, neglected uranium mine. You might be angry with the First Nations communities right now. Don't be. Don't wait and think about this for a minute. Maybe we know a little bit. I'm just not gonna finish that sentence. We know in the current political climate that one way to ensure lobbying success with any issue is to have the support from First Nation communities. Did the M T O, the Ministry of Mines, or the Ontario Government use this First Nation tender process worth possibly millions to gain First Nation support for this project and a political victory? We're gonna keep going. What is the surface area depth of the existing dam? It's approximately thirteen hectares with two-point-seven million tons of waste material. That is a lot. And if we keep going to fifteen, what is the volume capacity? Two-point-seven million tons of waste material. Increasing the quantity of fill material in the tailing management area will not increase the amount of surface water runoff and therefore will not impact the capacity of the polishing pond. Now we have a really detailed question. What were the recorded total file volumes placed in the T M F? Was there a geobrand liner? There's two-point-seven million tons of tailing material with no standing water. The west dam is lined with high-faline liner and includes a seepage cutoff wall was designed to retain tailings and water to reduce seepage towards John Free. The east barrier dip is constructed of waste rock and was designed to contain tailings but allow seepage from the tailings to drain into the polishing pond. The middle dam is constructed of clay, sandy silt material, and is designed to reduce seepage from the polishing pond. Has any other additional material ever been placed on the T M F? No, no additional material. Assuming all tailings were capped in either water or till as the current cap, stable enough to support the weight and pressure that will occur with additional volume and weight. The weight of the volume of the material will be distributed over a large area, and a biaxial composite geogrid will be placed between the fill and the existing cover to support the additional weight. The maximum fill thickness will be less than one-point-five meters and slope down to point-three meters near the edge. A biaxial composite geogrid and a layer of granular A material will be placed, oh, before placing material on the existing cover and tailings. You can see there's a few more details here, and these will be available on our website. Does the wall of the dam indicate erosion occurring? Erosion of the east barrier dip was observed at select locations. The erosion is a result of surface water flow over the dam and not towards the south drainage channel. It does not indicate any instability. Will neutral till cover be placed over the new material being placed, utilizing the radioactivity, radioactive material as cover should not be an option? So yes, the niobium tailings will be placed, and then it will be covered by another third foot, basically, of different grades of material. Existing tailings and cover will not be disturbed during placement of niobium tailings. Have we been told whether the soil contamination is called with health issues in yellow point? They are unaware of any. Does soil contamination affect the water quality wildlife gardens? Water sampling in the vicinity of the norm site show no elevated radioactivity. The maximum radiation level measured was within or barely above the background radiation exposure worldwide. It's a low risk for any direct exposure. If this transport does happen, will there be measures in place to ensure the maintenance is done on a regular basis? Regular maintenance will be undertaken. I can hear the moans and groans, and I think many of you know what our mine has looked like historically, and it looks great right now. But we all know that it was in disrepair for many years, so I know what you're saying. So the rehabilitation of mine hazards is under the abandoned mines rehabilitation program and contaminated sites. Who is responsible for the ongoing regulation and monitoring? It is the Ministry of Mines. Additional water monitoring will occur for a minimum of five years following the project. Well, the things that they're putting in there will be there much longer than five years. The Ultima disposal site was designated as a federally regulated area. Ultima will only accept the norm material originating from the Bokage Mine. And then this very long question, which talks about improving future long-term access to Agnew Lake tailings management area, and the concern is why? But they have said several times they will not be bringing anything else in, but there's no guarantee. In question thirty-two, it was about a hotspot in the bottom left-hand corner. We are not a hundred percent where exactly the niobium tailings are being placed, but I think we did just get some additional information saying they are covering this extra hotspot as well that wasn't in the original plans. Am I speaking? Okay, maybe not. There's a lot of information that has been coming through the office, so it's hard to keep up on everything. Rehabilitation efforts for abandoned mines are prioritized using a risk assessment that considers rings and the risk of mine hazards to public safety. We are small, and the funds are limited to maintain old mines. There are many old mines in the area, so we are a small little uranium mine that needs help. They will answer questions, and they do have their emails up there. And then we have three groundwater monitoring wells. They don't always all work, or they're not always being tested, and they range from one-point-five to two-point-one meters. What will happen to towns, properties and towns on route to site? Worried about transportation. They're saying there's no adverse impacts. Where is the decommission plan for the Bokage Mine? The decommission plans began in the nineteen nineties, and Bokage Mine was closed out in the early nineteen sixties, so there was no decommission plan for it. The Eco Matrix Risk Assessment Study in two thousand and fifteen identified the primary health risks or rate on gas and combined areas of potential impacts to shallow groundwater wells. There is no risk to casual site users. And for thirty-seven, they say there's little risk of leaching from the niobium tailings. They're concerned about water runoff, what will happen in the future. There is no evidence that indicates the Ultima negatively affects water chemistry and water quality in Agnew Lake or the surface water in the immediate surrounding areas, where some metals leaching from the norm material into the environment are low. They were asked about an N D A. We have heard many people suggest that there was N D A sign for the indigenous groups, but they say there were no N D A, signed a non-disclosure agreement, saying that people involved can't speak about the details. Who is signing the waiver of liability if something goes wrong? The governments of Ontario and Canada are responsible. When is the latest date to move the material? There is a possibility that trucking may begin mid-August. That's a date that we have heard quite a bit. Ever, the last thing we heard was that everything wasn't approved through the C N S C yet. But mid-August is a real Well, thank you for listening to those boring questions and answers. Next, we have, see, no, no, next, we have, oh, from the township of Paul, with giving us information on the Freedom of Information Act. Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Maisy. So we had submitted quite a few ethylide, which is freedom of information requests, and they were sent to the following ministries: the Ministry of Labor, Immigration, Training and Skills Development, Indigenous Affairs and First Nations Economic Reconciliation, Mines, Northern Development, Ministry of Natural Resources, Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks, and the Ministry of Transportation. The following information is what has been supplied to us to date. So from the first few ministries, from the Ministry of Labor, Immigration, Training and Skills Development, from the Ministry of Indigenous Affairs, sorry, Affairs and First Nation Economic Reconciliation, the Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks, they all pretty much advised the same thing, that they conducted thorough searches and yielded no results. They also recommended forwarding the request to the M T O. The Ministry of Mines and Northern Development advised that the information requested was supplied in a recent meeting in that nice big binder Mayor Maisy showed us. The Ministry of Natural Resources advised that they believed the Ministry of Mines had a greater interest in the requested information and transferred the request pursuant to section twenty-five-two of the Act. And last but not least, the Ministry of Transportation advised the search would be costly, would require an extension, and records may be protected under the following exemptions. Section twelve, to protect cabinet records. Section fifteen-point-one, to protect relations with Aboriginal communities. Section seventeen, to protect third-party information. Section eighteen, to protect economic and other interests of Ontario. And section twenty-one-point-one, to protect personal privacy. Thank you.
All right, we just have to change the battery for a second, please. Hi, everyone. Can everyone hear me? Just raise your hand or yell at me if I hate microphones, and that's probably why. So I'm Belinda Ketchba, the C A O for the Township of Naranheimen, and I want to thank you all personally for taking time out of this beautiful summer day to come. We know this isn't a fun subject, but it really means a lot to all of us that you took the time to come. So thank you, Mayor Maisy, for going through all the super fun questions. It's my job. Can you hear me?
Don't you guys have a map of the areas to visualize what we're talking about, where it's located? Probably rivers are near it, most lakes are near it, spawns, roads.
That would be a great idea, unfortunately. We had that at our last meeting, but I'm more than happy to share that with you if you want to connect with me afterwards. And I'll also put a map on our website. Um, and I'll also put a map on our website. So my job tonight is to do a summary of the Hutchinson Environmental Consultants that we hired to go through that wonderful binder that I'm gonna see in my nightmares for the rest of my life. Um, so we got this binder on April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Um, as you can see, very substantial amount of information, and that's only half of it. Um, so we got thousands of pages of technical reports, data um, from the Ministry of Mines and the MTO. They included a human health and ecological risk assessment and a conceptual site model. And these were prepared by a very reputable um, environmental consultant called EcoMetrix. And the latest one was done in two thousand twenty-four. So in light that we're a very small administrative staff, there's three of us. Um, we decided along with council to hire Hutchinson Environmental. Um, as I said, uh, they're also a very well-respected consulting firm, and their expertise is hydro, uh, geology, environmental chemistry, and ecological risk assessments. So we have hired them to tell us what is in this data and show us where we should be needing to go. So what did they find? So the ministries report basically have been telling us, don't worry, risks are low. But the Hutchinson review came back with a different conclusion. It doesn't conclude that this project's safe. What it does conclude, there's not enough evidence to say it's safe. And there's a big difference between safe and just not enough information. So they flagged quite a few uh, major concerns such as missing data, outdated testing methods, assumptions that haven't been proven in the fields. But one of the biggest red flags is there's no communicative effects risk assessment. And what essentially that is, is that's an assessment that's gonna tell us what happens when you put new Niobium tailings on top of old uranium tailings? How do those two types of waste products mix and interact? Totally forgot about the slides.
Let me, which one are we on?
Slide five. Okay, so what's really in the Niobium tailings? So Mayor Maisy did uh, touch on that. Um, there's some really good stuff in it. Radioactive elements like uranium two-three-eight. Sorry, I can't say that word. Thorium, two-three-zero, radium, two-two-six, lead, two-ten, and plutonium, two-ten. What are these things? Well, the really fun thing about all these radionuclides is they're harmful to us all in different ways. So uranium is chemically toxic to kidneys. Long-term exposure through drinking water can cause kidney dysfunction and damage. Radium two-two-six, as we've mentioned, has a half-life of sixteen hundred years. And when it decays, it decays into radon-two-two-two, which is a radioactive gas. So radioactive exposure, or sorry, radon exposure is a known cause of lung cancer, particularly in closed environments, and is also toxic to burrowing animals. Plutonium two-ten and lead two-ten emit alpha radiation. Alpha particles can cause severe damage to internal, internal organs if inhaled or ingested. So on top of all these fun things, we have toxic heavy metals. So we have cadmium. This is included in what's supposed to be coming here. This is a highly toxic metal that affects kidneys, liver, bones, and is classified as a human carcinogen. Even low levels in water can cause bioaccumulation in aquatic species. Our, we have arsenic as well. It's a well-documented carcinogen affecting skin, lungs, and the immune system. Arsenic readily binds to sediments and can remobilize under certain pH conditions. Selenium is an essential trace nutrient, and it's okay in small quantities, but toxic at higher concentrations in fish and birds. Selenium bioaccumulation can lead to reproductive failure and developmental deformities. On top of that, we have silver and magnesiums. It's very toxic to aquatic organisms, and it's capable of altering gill function, growth, and survival rates. So the only leach testing that was submitted to us by the ministry was based on a two thousand twenty study. And the method they used to complete this study is not meant for sites like Agnew Lake. It's designed for landfills and waste sites, not for environmental uh, environments that have a lot of water. Also, the detection limits that they use in that test were too high to catch many of the levels of metals. And the ministry says they are redoing the leach testing, but we don't know when, and we have no idea what the timeline is on that. So I So another key issue is an incomplete understanding of how water moves beneath and around the tailings management site. We have talked about this also at our last town hall. Um, the ministry's risk model assumes in all their data that the groundwater always flows consistently eastern. But even their own environmental consultants, EcoMetrix, study recommended that drainage interpretations needed to be verified on-site to understand the site conditions and confirm potential pathways. Um, Hutchinson has also flagged that there's no deep water wells, and there's no hydrogeologic cross-sections that've been provided. So in other words, none of us have any idea how the, the groundwater is moving around the site. And what's even worse is we know there's a geologic fault line under the site. So as we all know, fault lines can be very deep, and they act as preferential pathways for groundwater. So in this case, it may allow deep migration of water that's contaminated with these radionuclides and heavy metals. And it can take it right to Agnew Lake or even as far as Georgian Bay over time. So without knowing how the water moves underground, we can't predict where these contaminants are gonna show up. So what we've seen already at Agnew Lake, um, the ministry's own data show that the site is already in crisis. There's been documented levels of uranium, radium, cyanide, and water and sediments already on site. Of course, they're downplaying it and calling it a near-field problem. And essentially, they're saying that everything returns to normal downstream. The problem is, is they haven't explained what is normal and how are they actually measuring? The water quality memo that they submitted contains statements unsupported by reference data, and our environmental consultants emphasize that these conclusions cannot be trusted without a rigorous baseline and long-term monitoring data. So we did have um, a little bit of a bright light. Um, thanks to everyone's concerns and emails, the CNSC, that's the Canadian Nuclear Safety Commission, have heard our concerns. And what they did was um, something very special. They don't do this up very often. It's called a special water sampling project, and they came into Narin and Hyman this spring. So at our request, we were allowed to pick um, twelve locations that were key areas of concern. So that was at Agnew Lake, the Spanish River, John Creek, and Menistive Creek. And while spring is not a great time to be doing water sampling just due to the elevated water levels, we do appreciate their willingness to take our concerns and they're moving in the right direction. Um, we did receive these samples um, earlier today. Unfortunately, they weren't accompanied by a report that would state whether it's exceedances in what location. That is coming though. Um, so like I said, I'm not a chemist. I wasn't able to interpret them, but we will be getting this information soon. Slide. So moving on to ecological health, the review points out a serious lack of biological monitoring at this site. Um, the ministry's risk assessment did not include fish tissue sampling, aquatic vegetation uptake studies, or macro-invertebrate assessments, despite that these are very routine components of an environmental risk evaluation. And this omission is particularly problematic because um, cad- cadmium and selenium bioaccumulate, means they build up over time. Um, fish and vertebrates take up these heavy metals. Then they serve as prey or food for other birds, mammals, even humans. So Hutchinson has strongly recommended that future monitoring include the following biological endpoints, such as seasonal fish tissue samples from John Creek, Menistive Creek, the Spanish River, and Agnew Lake. Um, aquatic vegetation chemistry at these same locations, and macro-invertebrate surveys to assess species richness and abundance. So I asked what um, invertebrate um, micro, macro-invertebrate were. I didn't know what that was. It's essentially just all the little water bugs. And they are very sus- susceptible to these types of metals and contaminants. And when we do a study of them to see how they're doing, essentially that shows us a lot of the health of the water. So the ministry also makes some amazing claims that natural wetlands surrounding the site is an effective mitigation strategy for these types of uh, radionuclides and metals. However, our consultants warn that this is a very unreliable strategy for radioactive contaminants. Wetlands can help remove metals, but they're not proven to reduce concentrations of radium, uranium, thorium in a predictable way or safe way without engineered systems and active maintenance. That's fine. So then they also forgot about our brewing animals. Um, this was included in a past risk assessment, but this one in two thousand twenty-four decided, hmm, they don't care about these things. Um, so the, what's the problem? If, you know, people might just say, oh, there's a few groundhogs or there's a couple turtles. The problem is, is when radon-two-two-two, which is a decay product of radium-two-two-six, are found in these tailings, they are buried. Even if you put a beautiful, nice cap over top of it, the risk is that these animals will tunnel and burrow into the cap, and they're exposed to these types of radiation. It also helps promote extra erosion as well. So then we get on to what's the construction plan? So we've been told that all these plans are available, they're ready to go. Well, we haven't seen any of them. Uh, we don't know the exact placement of the tailings. Um, the ministry has told us there's gonna be a geo-grid and a wonderful layer of only six inches deep of clean fill placed on top of this as a cap. Um, that's not really getting me excited. Um, the ministries promised a range of plans to mitigate construction phase risks. Um, they've said they're gonna be doing a dust management plan, a soils management plan, health and safety plan, construction sequencing documents. However, we haven't seen any of those yet either. So essentially, they're asking us to trust plans that we don't know what they are, and they're not showing us. Um, so we also have some problem with some baseline monitoring. Why is that important? It's because we don't understand if the site's in further danger, if we don't know what the danger was before they brought in this extra material. So we need baseline data on surface water, sediment, uh, fish species before any of this material is brought in. We als- we also need to be asking for regular testing of Agnew Lake and the Spanish River, and we don't feel that it should be at the township's cost. We feel like this should be part of the monitoring. So right now, the ministry So there's one little bright light that we have, and we don't want to put too much faith in it. But we've just received an email last week from the MTO that part of the Niobium tailings are going to a Clean Harbors radioactive waste facility near Sarnia. And that is what these sites are designed to receive dangerous materials. So it asks a very interesting question. If some of the tailings need to go there, why don't all the tailings go there? They can be disposed of a very safe way there in a facility that's designed to take them. Excellent. So where are we at? So the township has made an information request to the MTO and Ministry of Energy and Mines because we're missing all these critical things. So we need to have a study of what happens when uranium and Niobium mix. We need to have an updated risk assessment, understand how leaching is happening and could happen in the future. We need to understand the exposure to wildlife. We also need to know that if and when they are bringing the stuff in, is it gonna be done in a safe way? We also need to have baseline sampling programs, not now, like now, not after we have another major problem. What has happened with this site is, as we all know, it was a uranium mine. And when you talk to the long-term residents in this area, they were not allowed to eat the fish or deer or anything from that site from a long time. Do we want to go back to that?
Are the sites still be monitored? Is it passive because?
It still is. Unfortunately, they're not doing a very good job of it.
So that should also be a concern, right?
Hundred percent.
This site's gonna be monitored now, and all of these testing should still happen because it's already uranium there, right?
Hundred percent. And as we know, some of the stuff coming in lasts sixteen hundred years. So I don't think a five-year plan is gonna do it, and that's what you're saying.
What I'm saying is there should have already been a plan. Our coun- your council should have already known about all of this because it was already your need. I have books, this is from eighty-two. So since eighty-two, your township, my township, every township in our area has known about impacts of uranium and mine and transportation. This one's from two thousand and three. Canadian impact of the nuclear industry in Canada. So that's my concern, why this site is just able to go under everyone's radar. Only until we add new stuff is it, oh, a big deal. But this site is still very dangerous today.
No, you're right. And I promise you, we'll be having a comment period afterwards, and feel free to voice all your concerns because uh, the people that are in charge need to, to hear your concerns.
But that would mean there's a baseline, right?
You would think so. So what's our position? So my recommendation to our council is we should not be allowing the tailings to come in. It's, it's a community safety issue, and I don't want our township to be a dumping ground in complete silence. I just want to close with one final thought. Um, we all know who David Suzuki is. Well, we're not talking about him personally. We're gonna talk about this great quote that, um, this is from July second. So this is twelve days ago. So the, the quote is, and you can look this up on iPolitics. Um, the foundation of our existence is nature, clean air, pure water, rich soil, food, and sunlight. That's the foundation of the way we live, and when we construct legal, economic, and political systems, they have to be built around protecting those very things, but they're not. He's urging local communities to get together, and citizens are gonna have to be at the front lines. So I thank you all for showing up and showing that you care about our environment and going to the front lines with us.
Thank you so much, CAO Ketchba. That was awesome. Now we're going to go to comments from the floor. Um, if you have a question, we're going to give you three minutes. Um, we're going to try to answer it as best we can, but we do not have all answers. Um, and if you could start by giving us your name and where you're from. My question um, to you is what you, what would you like us to do next? So we have a council meeting following this, and your feedback would be great. Are we going to have a wandering mic or have people?
Because people come here with the mic situation is a little.
Sure, we're down one mic. So if you have a question, come up. Don't be shy. Um, it is a little scary, but you'll be okay.
Uh, there, there was a gentleman in the back who wanted to see a map. I'm just wondering if we could put Google Maps on a computer.
Oh, boy. You under, you overestimate my technical. I will try.
Your office to help.
Perfect. Perfect.
Is that who?
Yeah. Okay, so that's still free.
Sure, if you have a wolf and take another comment.
My name is Jan Robitaille-Rohardt. Where to start? I see that uh one of the issues they tried to kind of mention has to do with the fact that there's all these different metals. At that are going to be brought in. And I had specifically asked. The question on synergistic toxicities of metals. I've I've studied heavy metals about twenty-five thousand hours worth. And um I'm going to give you an example. Because I gave this to council and some of the people that were on the distribution list previously. And. You can take a metal like aluminum, the most common metal in the environment. And oh, it's really safe. It's aluminum, right? Mix aluminum with mercury or other heavy metals like lead. There is a study that was done. It's called Mercury on the Mind. And again, you can do this with heavy metals of all kinds. You need to request a study looking not only at what's being brought in. But also what are the interactions with aluminum and any other metal at that site? Because if you take, for example, a dose of aluminum, that's enough to kill one out of a hundred rats. And then you take a dose, say, of mercury, which is enough to kill one out of a hundred rats. Because of the synergistic toxicities of metals. Put those two small doses together, you will kill a hundred out of a hundred rats. And that's from a PhD in chemistry in the US. The study's called Mercury on the Mind. So people need to understand, it's not just, oh, it's perfectly safe. You need to look at the interactions of every single metal in combination with others. You need to know which isotopes you're dealing with. My brother's is a PhD in inorganic chemistry. And when I asked him about the neodymium, he said, well, you don't really know what you're dealing with. Until you know the specific isotopes. So that's going to be the same for all these heavy metals and stuff. People need to be informed because this is what I call another garbage report. And Franche Gelinot can attest to the fact that I have brought up a lot of garbage investigation reports to the government.
Sir, with the map, gentlemen, with the map, did you want to pinpoint any or do we want to?
So on the screen, you can see that's the tailings area from the old uranium mine, Agnew Lake, uh uranium mine. Uh and I think that's where they're going to put the new norm, all that norm material. They're going to put it right on top there. And to the west is John Creek, I believe, just about a kilometer there. And then on the east side is Manistic Creek, I believe. So it's right on a watershed, which means that all that radioactive material will go right into the water.
Which maybe. I don't think we mentioned it today, but it's been um, you know, it's twenty-seven kilometers from our drinking water site, our intake. And a hundred and thirty kilometers to uh people in Agnew Lake that have, we have individual camps that take in water. From the lake for their water source. So twenty-seven kilometers for us is pretty close. Come on up if you have a comment.
I don't need your mic.
All right.
I just want to know, so what were the problems where the material is right now? What were the health concerns there? That may be better having removed this stuff?
That's a great question. It's in Nipissing First Nations, but it is right in their residential area. So if you can imagine, thi- this wasn't their mine. They didn't make money from it. But someone dumped the tailings near their shore. And then, you know, so it looks like rock. And they've used some of it in foundations, in stairs, like they used it in concrete, right? So it became part of their building and their settlement. And the issue is radon. Which went off, it when it has its half-life, that you you get radon gas. And if you're in a confined space, it's toxic. So it is right in their municipal area. It's like if they came and dumped it right here. So it does need to leave Nipissing First Nations. It it absolutely does. And they were kind enough to say. They did not want, as much as they, I'm I'm going to get the quote wrong, but as much as they didn't want it where they were. They didn't want to have to push it on someone else, right? They didn't want it and they don't want to push it on someone else. So it does need to leave. On Nipissing First Nations.
Now it's going to be pushed on us, like we already have a line on Whitefish and Sir that was built by, I think, correct. Sir John A. McDonald back in the day, one of our former prime ministers. That is now leaching in Long Lake, into all those lakes in the city that needs to be rehaped because they all know that it's leaching. So we already know the track record of the ministries of uh mines and them, track records of all past mine. So we have all these old lines that are not being cared for, not being tested, because like you say, they're only going to test in five years. But we have so many mines now that, like you say, this mine already is probably leaching in our water. So we're going to go put a ton more. Nuclear stuff on it to make these worse, right? There there's no common sense of this. Like, there's got to be a better solution than putting it in our water channel. It should probably be mixed in the concrete somewhere else, right? But at least in a concrete, so it's not open to oxygen and it's not coming in contact with other stuff. Like, they they got to think of a better plan than this. This is just like a land build, you know? We just be filling a hole with this plateau site, but what does it see where water down the road?
Yeah, absolutely. That's our concern is the drinking water. Does anyone, any any other comments? Okay.
Just saying that it's through the report, like I'm sorry I missed the other meetings, but I I really meant to be here. Um I'm really involved. Uh I work for the Chelmsford Fish and Games, we're putting fish in the rivers and providing it. Um but um my question was, did the members of this community get a um a questionnaire on how they felt about this? Like, I know it said, like, um the natives got asked, the the tribes and this, okay, that's fine. But did every citizen of this community get a a letter then saying, you know, this is going to happen, go back there?
Okay, we can't, we can't do better than that. The municipality did not know. We discovered it. By noticing really nice roads. And you're right, many First Nations communities were consulted. Um I I think other people knew, they did not consult with us. And so if we at the municipality don't know, definitely our residents do know, do not know.
Could be the major breadwinner in this field. Who's going to officially get officially?
I I think they're looking at it as kill two birds with one stone in the sense that our mine does need new cover. There is um too much radioactivity, they but we want clean fill. We don't want to use niobium tailings to add it. Um so I I think the government of Ministry of Mines and the MTO were just thinking, let it, this is not that far from Nipissing First Nations. Let's just put it here.
When were you guys first known about you guys needing new fill and talk for the existing mine?
You know, that could be one of the good things that's actually come up um from this is that all of a sudden, now we are experts. In our old uranium mine. We weren't really monitoring it. It wasn't really on council's um radar. And and now it is. Um and to be honest, this isn't a five-year issue or even a twenty-year issue. This is, you know, hundreds of years.
So if nothing new gets put on, we win this fight. What is going to happen? What are you guys going to do for the existing site? As it is because it is probably leaching, you're right. There's stuff there and we don't know the water, even though west to east is usually water. But all of the things you just said, it's still applied to the existing set.
You're right, so.
Love to know a plan of action to what we're going to do, what you guys are going to do, even if nothing else gets put on top of this. Uh when new, even with new fill on top, it's the bottom we're worried about, right? We've already established that. It's ground, water, it's it it's could be fractured, it could be so whatever we would, if we get good stuff on top. Even if it's not this other stuff, what are we going to do about the uranium that's already there, that's leaching? The byproducts that are probably from that mine? Who knows if the Ministry of Mines did their job properly when they closed that mine?
You're right. Hang on, hang on.
There's supposed to be a closure plan for mines for up to twenty-five years, I believe. That's what I think.
So the good news is, um we locally know a lot more than we did a year ago.
Why is that? Why isn't the Ministry of Mines already letting people know and already on top of it? And it's been monitored, it's been checked. Like, why, why are these mines going unchecked? Until somebody gets, until our fireman sees a new road that's got for logging. Why? Why is that even happening? How does that happen?
I I think the reality is, hang on, ma'am. Um the reality is, I I think there's limited funding for a mine rehabilitation. And like they said, they're going to where they think it is most essential and the least risk. I'm not trying to defend, I I don't know enough details about their job, but I think you're right. We would lobby for clean fill to be put on top. And then we would watch uh the mine and uh we've already been to Hutchinson Environmental twice. Um we're capable of doing it again. Um the CNSC does make their results um public and we need to watch them. But the reality is, there might be some kind of cost because a a normal, regular, everyday person cannot just look at them. And know whether there's overages or not.
Everybody hear me okay? Uh my name is Paul Vies and I have a real vested interest in this because uh we have a potage on. John Creek, which is about one mile, a kilometer from that site. And we've had it there for seventy-two years. As geologists, stayed in our camp, down the Dan Mine. Um so I guess where we are right now is we're trying to decide what to do. It sounds like we're not moving them.
We're not doing anything?
Well, no, that it looks like it's going to happen in August and we're just trying to figure out what we're going to do.
Look, I think there is a chance when we see this public interest um uproar. I think there is a chance that they may listen to us. They are not doing anything illegal. They can bring it in. Um but I I think if the more people are concerned, the more letters that get written, the the that's that's the only chance.
Okay, I I have a suggestion. Let me just, I don't know who saw the email when um. Brought this to the to the Ontario Minister to be. When Michael Mantas brought this and addressed it to the Ontario Minister of Mines. And there's a video on it. Everybody who ever hasn't received that video, talk to us and they'll show it to you and see what a joke it was. Michael Mantas reported, he reported exactly what's going on, all of our concerns. Uh I'll just give you a brief note of what that minister said. Now, this is the minister, Ontario Minister of Mines, George Perry. And when you look at the video, he wasn't briefed. I'll give you a summary. It's it was as if he read a one paragraph line from the MTO guy that we had here. Gary Stevenson, who obviously has a very vested interest in this movement, okay? Nothing to benefit us. So he, as this minister was reading it, it was a one-pager. And he was falling with his finger because he hadn't briefed himself before he commented to all of us Canadians. So in my opinion, he either wasn't briefed or he sure didn't take us seriously and he wasn't doing his job. So my suggestion is that we hire a piranha, sarcastic. Piranhas, you should know who we get. Do you know of somebody we can get right now? And the person we, okay, we can't go after the indigenous, we know that because. They'd be here and it would have been stopped. They want it because they're going to make a lot of money on transportation and monitoring the site for a year. So the one who can stop it is this George Perry. And I think if we had somebody very strong right now. And all out hearing our voices go after him, he could probably stop this. Because he misrepresented all of us here. You watch that video, you're going to think it's disgraceful the way he spoke, Mike Mantas, right? So do you know of anybody we could hire right now? Do we, do we have money in a budget?
That's a conversation for us.
What's that? Well, I think the trucks are going to be starting in August and I, something has to be done right now.
So who's interested in a demonstration? That's what he's talking about. I only saw a few hands. We're not going to recommend civil disobedience. That is not what we're going to suggest, but. peaceful demonstration is fun. Would anyone else like to? Hold on, if if you have a comment, please come forward.
People sitting right there, well, what you just said, you're talking with strong people. We have two strong people. I can.
Okay.
Sorry, I blew up the mic.
Thanks. So I've been here and I'm here tonight. We're, I'm here to gather information, same as you have. And I've taken, I'll take everything of uh the assistant here that's taken down everything and we're taking all those comments. All the concerns, we're taking them back to the minister, which is Minister Steve Lecchi of Peace of Energy and Mines. And I talked to him on the way here and I'll take those back and he will respond to those concerns.
So I was there on September eleventh when we asked a whole bunch of questions to the Minister of Transportation. The Minister representative from the Minister of Transportation, Minister of Mines. And they basically broke our trust. How can you tell us that all is fine when there's areas of the tailings where the radiation are eight times too high? How could you tell us that the water is good when the places where you test for water was not up to snuff? Was not deep enough, was not doing their job. They broke their trust. It was up to them to rebuild the trust. So they sent us binder. Uh that we all learned about tonight and didn't work for me. They did not rebuild the trust, answering the questions from below in two thousand and nine. That's twenty-six, that's sixteen years ago, fish started to die in Long Lake. The Health Unit in two thousand and eleven issued a health advisory to say the level of arsenic. Leaching into Long Lake was way too high. I have been working with the Minister of Mine, they've changed over time. Since two thousand and eleven, the leaching of arsenic into Long Lake. And the rehabilitation of that old gold mine is the number one priority of the Ministry of Mine. For the last fourteen years and nothing has been done yet. So I'm just putting this out there to tell you that they know that arsenic is leaching. They know that it comes from an abandoned mine. They know that the fish are dying, the birds that eat those fish are dying. That the health units say don't use the water, that there are lots of people who live on Long Lake that are worried and at risk. And nothing has been done to date. So I'm putting that out there to answer some of the questions about how come we didn't know. Uh that uh the tailings at the end of Agnew Lake have had radiations too high. For the same reason that half of the abandoned mines in all of Ontario, almost half of them are in my riding. In Nicobalt and we know nothing about any of them. And we know nothing about any of them, unless you, people like you and I start to see things. Why is there so many dead fish? Why is there so many birds that eat those fish that dies? And we start to ask question. There is no monitoring being done. There is no sharing of information or any of that going on that I can tell and I have looked for it. Uh, so I, I don't wanna be the bearer of bad news.
To have that done, to have abandoned mines looked after and monitored and, and checked and the local late, is that the Ministry of Mines responsibility? Is that ours? Is it, whose responsibility is it? To, to monitor all the abandoned mines? Because like you said, they're.
In law, we have laws in Ontario and it is the responsibility of the Minister of Mine for all of the old mines. For new mines in the nineteen nineties, new laws were passed. So that new mines that open now have responsibility for ongoing monitoring with the closing plans and all this. But for all of the old abandoned mines, the law says that it is the responsibility of the Ministry of Health. If I was, sorry, the Ministry of Mines, if I was to grade them on a scale of zero to ten, how good of a job they are doing? Uh, yeah. Minus a hundred.
Ford has got it all the water protection laws.
Ask them to do their job. I've, I've done that a number of times.
I just wanna know why their, uh, trucking role is stopped when there's train tracks all the way to here.
Well, that's a good question. They do have a lot of trucking, um, policies in place. I wasn't worried so much about transportation because that doesn't actually come through our town. But you're right, that, that is, you know, why not put it on rail? That is an option. Uh, ma'am, you wanna come forward?
My, I think some of the grand boys, I'd just like to point out those tracks, the train fell off a few years back. So I don't think you wanna put the.
Well, you can have an accident with a truck too. So same thing. Sir, come on back up. We need to hire a lawyer, um. I, I, I actually, I, I mean, really this goes to council, they make a decision of which direction that we go. Um, I, I think, um, demonstration, this meeting and coming and voicing concerns is a first step. Um, but yeah, we can talk about other options. The other issue is, they know we are a small municipality with limited resources. We are not, you know, no, no municipalities have money lying around just wondering what to do with it. So i- it's, uh, we're limited to what we can do. Oh, oh.
Uh, I'm not sure how, but, but what if the council and the other members of parliament, what if you proposed to send it all down to Sarnia?
Oh, I think that's a great idea. Um. I'm actually gonna take this, is this, um, Jessica?
Sorry. The transportation thing is relevant to me personally. I live on my old row. So we pass the, I pass my house, I live on Minister Green. Anything going in, you know, we're talking about leaching that. But in terms of transportation, that's, you know, there is a community down that way. Like, my, of my neighbors, we are down there. So what is gonna be done if there is a spill, if there is contamination? I can't even get my roads salted in the winter because I'm worried about the water banks. They'll open down sand, but they won't put down salt. So what happens if there is?
Dust.
If there is dust, dust is a concern. I get that you're going to follow our regulations, we, you know, as much as possible. There is the Transportation of Dangerous Goods Act, there are things in place. But are those things gonna be followed and what plan is in place? I clearly saw there is basically no rescue system anyway. But what plan is in place if there is a spill during transportation? The fill itself and the storage is not the only issue there. And those roads are already bad. So what is also gonna be done to rehabilitate my roads and after you've sent all those trucks down?
So you're not in the township of Narenheimen, right?
I'm in Worthing.
You're in Worthing, so city of Greater Sudbury?
From, no, I am up the street from Naringe, Lake Mott.
Yeah. Um, I think this is a great thing to take to your council. I, I think these are questions, they are our roads. We can't make decisions about it. Um, I, there may be, um, I think there's been repairs to roads to facilitate having this number of trucks make it to Agnew Lake, um, tailings area. None of those roads are ours.
Right.
Um, so Narenheimen is really not benefiting in any way. At least city of Greater Sudbury, I think, is getting some fixed up roads and some culverts. Um, but, uh, yeah, there's nothing. And there is a, a huge transportation policy. I don't know if we have it in that binder, but we have, oh.
No, I'm just saying, sorry.
Um, yeah, so there is a huge transportation policy. They've spoken to us about it. Um, which was a red flag too. Why do you have, um, your workers in PPE? You, you know, and, and where's the, you know, there's concern about, that you're washing the trucks before you return and then you're containing that water. So that was a red flag to us early on. I think I saw somewhere, ma'am?
Okay, my name is Patricia Paltow and I'm from Zeta. Uh, but I came tonight is because I'm concerned about the transportation from Nipissing to the, to the area where they wanna put all these tailings. Uh, I think it affects a lot of people. I was expecting to see this roof pole and people outside because we were asking people to come from Nipissing to this area because it affects everybody. When these trucks are on our highways and they say, now, I don't know if this is true, you can pull me on that. The message said that they are going to be trucks that are not covered. They're not gonna be contained. They're like dump trucks.
I, I can't speak to it, um, specifically. I don't have it in front of me.
On the message that they would be, um.
Okay, I, I don't know if that's a hundred percent accurate, but I'd have to look that up.
So if that's applies all over the place, it's gonna be spread from Nipissing to this area. My daughter travels that highway every day to go to work in Sudbury. I can't help twice. It's not very good.
Yeah, no, it's not.
I think we all need to look into this issue. It's not just, I feel sorry for you guys because you're getting the real glances of it right here. But I think it concerns everybody.
So I'm gonna advise you to go to the city of Greater Sudbury, right, to be.
Mister LaFevre would be here tonight.
Oh, yeah, those are the. Ma'am?
I'm going to echo something that this lady said here. It's a bigger problem than Naren's or the city of Sudbury's or Agnew Lake Mine or wherever you live. It's a prob, it's a problem that has to be addressed by the province. And I don't feel optimistic about how powerful, whether we're all here powerful enough to make the traditional government move on the environment at this point. But that is the problem. It's inattention to our environment and to the safety and, and health of the people who live all over Ontario. This is a specific problem, there's a specific area. But the reason it's there is because the province does not look back to the state's health and environmental concerns of its citizens. And I'd be interested in hearing, I know France is on our side. I'd like to stop, teach somebody who's actually sitting in the government's side to talk, address that issue. Because we can go demonstrate, we can do whatever we want, but what they really care about is both. And whether there's enough people in Northern Ontario to move them, I don't know. But it, it's much bigger than what we're talking about tonight. It's very vocal here, but it's spread right across the cross.
All right.
I just wanted to say one thing, that modeling is not a very, uh, good way. Yeah, it's not science. Modeling is not science. The people who develop the models and come up with any result that they want. It's not accurate and don't like, don't be, don't listen to that kind of data.
Well, I, I will say that Hutchinson Environmental, that we go and we pay them money and we, um, they interpret for us. They did say Echomatrix, the study that was done, that they do good work. That, that, that was their general review, that the original work that was done was done by a reputable company. It was just that, you know, eight studies were missing. And there were a lot of questions not really answered. CEO Ketchwood, do you have more to add? Am I missing something?
Yeah, through you, ma'am chair. Um, the problem is, is when you have studies and there's recommendations and they don't do the recommendations, you're, you're basically, your study is just a piece of paper.
Well, so are they're like, yeah, exactly, like, modeling not gonna help us. Another thing that I haven't even heard from anybody here is the land value. When people are afraid that something's gonna be leaking and affecting groundwater, everybody's property is going to be devalued. Who's gonna compensate the homeowners, the property owners? I just wanna bring that perspective to the table. There's a lot of perspective, you know, different ways of looking at it, environmentally.
Yeah, no, no one's really talked about that. What they are saying is that this is safe and it's not going to be an issue. So we just don't wanna, oh, sir in the red shirt, this is my husband.
I'm running the mayor.
Uh, I do have a question actually, uh. Yeah, this is a horrible mic.
It is horrible. Yeah, you can take it.
There we go. Do have a question. You noted in, or, uh, and start of your presentation. And Nipissing First Nation notes it actually on their website that, uh, currently this material is going to Coruna. It's not actually Sarnia, it's Clean Harbors Coruna site. And we come from there before we were here for seventeen years. Coruna's, Coruna's site, Clean Harbor site is the most hazardous waste disposal site in Ontario. They take the most toxic things in Ontario, that's where they go because it's a clay-based township. Like, the worst things in Ontario get sent to Coruna. We live there. I can tell you what's there. If this is so innocent material, I'd like to understand from the ministries, why are you sending it to Coruna? What, I mean, if you're saying, telling us it's innocent, that this is, this is non-toxic material, why are you shipping it all the way to Sarnia to the most hazardous waste disposal site in Ontario? Why wouldn't you just send it to a local landfill? No, you can't do that because you're sending it to Coruna. Anyways, it's a question to ask the ministries, because they're already doing that. Why are you sending it there? There's certain requirements to go to that site.
They're gonna tell you, this is the stuff they're covering, the bad stuff that, like, they're telling us.
I'm just saying, they're, they're saying that this is a certain, you know, level in regards to material. Well, sending it there is sending a different message, it's sending the exact opposite message. That this would be the most toxic type of stuff that you would be handling. Thank you.
Let me just, is anybody else, maps? Uh, if you can come on forward and. Sure, but short, you have three minutes.
Just three minutes.
This is a discussion that I had with the AI that is on Twitter. And I asked him about what's going on and about what is in this stuff. So anyway, he says, below is a concise summation of our discussion about the proposed disposal of thirty-four tons of niobium and potential uranium containing tailings from Nipissing First Nations at the Agnew Lake Tailings Management near Naren Centre, Ontario. The summary covers the environmental risks of the fauna, the nature, animals, and the feasible and alternative disposal in a valley mine shaft. And the safest disposal option while incorporating key points in the environmental studies and community concerns. It addresses the impact of the Agnew fish species, northern pike, small mouth bass, walleye, and mercury advisories and nearby terrestrial wildlife and footnotes to the sources as requested. Summation of the discussion of niobium tailings disposal at Agnew Lake. TMA environmental risks at Agnew Lake TMA disposal. Contents of the Agnew Lake TMA. It tells you what's in it.
I, you know what, this actually explains what's on our website.
Yeah, I've taken it from everyone, so yeah.
Yeah.
It wasn't taken from the website.
But AI searches everywhere.
I don't know, there's like, I mean, it's fifty, there's like fifty sources here. Okay, then, will you take it? For you guys?
Yeah.
I mean, we have. Cause there's a lot of, there's more in this stuff than, than what you're saying. There's mercury and the AI is saying that if you add stuff on top of that stuff, it's gonna make the bottom stuff even worse. And it's not only gonna go to the water, every bird that slides over that lake, every fish that comes out of that lake, you already have an advisory on your fish as far as mercury. Are you aware of that? Uh, you shouldn't be eating your fish out of that lake.
Out of Agnew Lake?
That's right. That advisory is already there. So what the AI is saying is this opens up huge can worms. They could do this very safely by just putting it inside one of the old mine shafts that is a valley inco, creating mine or anything like that and, and seal it up. End of story. They're taking the.
Just letting you know you've had your three minutes.
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's see if anyone else has any comments. Sir, come on up.
Now, I know that they've got it perfected. They perfected the art of putting their shit in mine and it's safe. Now, getting a guarantee that this stuff will be monitored for sixteen hundred years is not getting them.
No, they haven't committed to that.
I see the map up there, but basically it's just surface. I don't wanna know, did they do any GPRs or digests?
I don't believe so, not that we.
No, that's what we've been asking for is for, for hydro, sorry, hydro geological study.
Yeah, because they can pass drones and do a grid and do rapid penetrating radar to see and then do a digest to see where all the water goes. And before putting anything on the surface, that has to be done. It was nice to know that absolutely nothing has been done, that nothing will be done. The first time I made a suggestion of getting a lawyer is a good idea because an injunction against this would be a good idea.
It sounds expensive.
Yeah, if we find somebody that would do a class action suit against this, I'm sure he would make a lot of money on the win because it's definitely a winning case. Or they just don't think you guys are big enough to be able to stand up against something.
Correct. I mean, right, that's the same, same thinking. Thank you. Could you like, come forward? Yeah, if you have a comment, please come forward. If you've already spoken, please give other people a chance.
I need to tell all you guys something at the end when the meeting's over. If they don't want me to talk.
Good evening. My name is Tiffany Brockley. I am from Tuking First Nation on Manon Tulin Island. I am the CEO of United Chiefs and Councils of Nidunisie. Our view has not changed for you, CCMN First Nations. There is a lack of transparency and accountability. We have never consented to any of this. Ontario has not shared all information. There was no deal with our UCCAM four nations. After all, our treatment center, Le Quadswin, currently uses land here.
We, we just can't thank you enough for standing with us. Thank you so much. Really big deal.
Mayor Maisy, uh, we have Renee that's been putting her head up.
Oh, sure, yeah. Renee Lloyd, she has been a helper to us all around, along and, yeah, we'd like you, if you have to say.
Thanks so much. And, and I am, I am very grateful and very impressed with the work that the councils of, uh, Hyman and Baldwin have been doing. It's just been absolutely very good. And, and, and very unusual for municipal councils, small municipal councils to take this kind of effort on. And it's just, so I'm very grateful for that. I just wanted to add a bit. So, uh, there's been a lot of, um, focus on the. focus on the Ministry of Northern Development of Mines, or I guess it's just Ministry of Mines now. Um, and their responsibilities are irresponsibilities, and I echo all of that. Um, they are, they are responsible for the mine, but they hold a license for the mine. So when the mine was abandoned, Ontario picked it up. And then Canadian Nuclear Safety Commission said, you have to, you you, they brought them under license. Which means that it's not just the Ministry of Mines that's fallen down. It's also very much the Canadian Nuclear Safety Commission. It's their responsibility to monitor the licensee and to make sure that the licensee is operating responsibly, and they failed to do that. It's ten years since the Canadian Nuclear Safety Commission identified that the color, that the cover on the Agnew Lake Tailings Management area was failing. That's ten years, ten years, they've done nothing. And now there's this marriage of convenience, that there's a niobium from Nipissing and oh, there's a failed tailings cover at Agnew Lake. And I really think it's a marriage of convenience, and I think they've used the last several years to still do nothing. So I I think that you need to keep the pressure on Ministry of Mines, because they they own the problem. But the pressure also needs to go, and I I I I hope that MP Belonge, I know you're both new in the job. But you've got work to do, because the Canadian Nuclear Safety Commission is federal regulator, semi-independent, but I think that the federal government needs to step up on this. And our MP, I'm glad that uh that he's here uh to pick up the torch on that. So that's my main comment.
Thank you. It's Bernie Lloyd, super smart woman, and she is, we need her on.
No, sir, I have to let work it out next lady. It's not really a question, it's more just like a recommendation. We talked about the water pests that were done in the spring from all the water areas around. That's great that it was done in the spring, but I think like a second reading now when the waters are low to see what it's like. And possibly from another sort, another place instead of the same place. So you're having different monitors, different people. It's just a good point to second opinion.
And that's great scientific advice, actually.
Hello, my name is Emily and I came from Manitouland Island for this tonight, so thank you for organizing it. And some of the ideas that I just wanna say, if this makes sense, is taking some initial legal action. Can you hear now? Some initial legal action to put an immediate halt to it. I think that that's a really good idea. And working with different levels of governance and perhaps other municipalities. Because one of the things that was pointed out was that the waters, we really don't know where and how they travel. And so there's many, many precious freshwater waters. And so I think there's a lot of different levels of organizations and government and people that would wanna stand and try to work towards not just having this kind of waste thrown around.
Yeah, so I don't wanna give you the impression we've been sitting around doing nothing. We did meet with um MP George Perry in January. He did agree to get our mine cleaned up, to rehabilitate it, and um get answers to our questions, because as of January, we had asked questions in September. Like, what are you bringing in? And we did not have answers for a very long time, but he did not agree to stop the niobium from coming in. So he would remediate the site, he would get answers to our questions, but um at that point, he just didn't say anything but bring it in.
Uh, my name's Eric. I have invested interests in farms across the north and in your community. Um, so um you believe that it's safe, right? You guys, you guys, you over here, no? Agnew Lake, would you buy property there? Would you have grandchildren there? You know, hang out there?
No.
No? So uh I think if this is continued, we should start an injunction in court. Put a halt on it right away. Um, do it legally. We can do protests all we want, but the legal way is always the better way. And uh it'll get somewhere. If you continue and you move this anywhere, why aren't you guys using flurry trucks? Or contain trucks to move this material? Like, that's, like, I'm a trucker, like, that that's ridiculous. You wouldn't do that. So northern mines are responsible, right? Five years, and will they uh sign a contract stating that, hey, uh, if anybody gets sick, cancer, anything like that? Uh, are they gonna take responsibility for every person, man, woman, entity, born alive, real men? That's, that covers every everything and corporation. Only loiter to understand that one. So, yeah, um, if we don't do something, our waterways are gonna get screwed, Suckberry's waterways are gonna get worse. Like, we we have a lot of lakes from. It leaches everywhere. It's bad. We gotta do something now.
Yes, my name is Chris Ayot and uh I'm uh new to the area. I'm originally from Chelmsford, so pretty close to the area. We all share the same water systems and water things. Um, I haven't done it in a few years, but I know there's great groups around Sudbury, like the Chelmsford Fishing Games, still the fishing games. And here we are trying to inseminate fish, put fish back in the rivers so our grandchildren and children in the future can 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 fish and have the same chance that we have of maybe supplying ourselves with a free meal by going out with a fishing rod and uh enjoying the north, you know? So to me, this is mind-boggling. Like, that anybody that could come up and say, you know, hey, let's throw this on this other pile of heap of garbage and and it's gonna help itself, it's not, okay? And I know you all, how many of you guys uh in the last few weeks there have been driving up our our roads, you know? And maybe had a near miss or an accident that, you know, our roads are already overloaded, okay? We all know that they stopped the two-laning at Doug Ford's camp in Cottage Cottage Country and has not moved forward, okay? Our roads here are falling apart, okay? We already have an abundance of vehicles. And I'm sorry to say, but a lot of these new driving sport drivers that aren't Canadian are putting their lives at risk. So this is gonna be more trucks up these roads that are poorly maintained, okay? With drivers that are poorly qualified, and we all know this, they don't know where they get their licenses from. But let's just think of our safety. Oh, sorry. So no other comments about that, but it is the truth. Um, so I just want you guys to think about like the whole scenario. So they're gonna be bringing up poisons up our roads, accidents happen. Um, the roads are gonna be overloaded, and I'm sorry to say, but I don't trust the ministries. Okay, I don't trust the Ministry of Mines. I don't trust the MTO. So let's stand up for ourselves.
Hey, I think the point about trust was really important, that that started with us not knowing what was happening at all. And uh we can notice um lots of things that raise our uh trust. Is there anyone new that has any comments? All right, come on up.
Hi, I'm Lynn. Uh, I just wondered, do we have a definite date? Have they said it's still put everything on hold?
Um, I last we knew was mid-August, but they are waiting for a final approval for a certain water plan from the Canadian Nuclear Safety Commission. And they, the CNSC has said they will let us know when trucking will start. Um, that's all we know.
And the other question I have is that their first meeting, it's also mentioned about possibly trying to contact the Georgian Bay Association, being as the Spanish River runs into Georgian Bay and the Huron and to try to get those cottage associations and so forth onboard as well, because it could affect them in the future. I just wondered if it had been done, because if all the communities banded together, they could afford a lawyer for the class action.
Great idea. So I don't believe we've officially reached out to any Georgian Bay uh groups. Uh, you know, we're jumping into this, but remember, we asked the questions in September and we only got the answers in April. We go to council, ask what to do with it. They approve the budget to go to Hutchinson Environmental. Everything takes a long time, you know? So that's just the way it is. Um, sir?
I have a comment and a question. My question here is. Sorry, every now. Uh, the OMA. That would be something that, uh, that would be a good idea, because they're they're involved in the environment, the fishing, the hunting, especially our area is just based on hunting, fishing, camping. The comment that I had is on Sunday, the wife and I went out for a quad right. So we're just going through the trails and then we take this one trail and all of a sudden we see this, excuse me, this fence that was cut. Like, what is a fence doing in the middle of nowhere? So when we pass by it, we turn and look at the sign that says no access between September twenty twenty-five and, or no, twenty twenty-four. Twenty-four. So we keep going and we get to this clearing. But you can see us walking on one side. We get this clearing and we look and there's this huge sign that says radioactive material. And on the sign it says, no no tempting, no hunting lines, anything like that, and it just, in big letters, danger. So if they're putting these signs out that said danger, what do they mean that it's safer?
So the signs are there, because there are elevated levels of radioactivity, which is when they bring the cover in, that should lower. So we want the clean bill on this sign. Well, I don't know the sign, I don't know the signs behind it, but that that's, that's why. Now, here's the interesting fact, the cover does get stirred up quite a bit by ATVs and signs get taken. So they often complain when we say there's no signage and then the tent get, or the fence gets ripped, it's probably due to vandalism.
My name's Lynn O'Farrell. I live in McCarrick. I just wanted to respond to the woman that talked about Georgian Bay. Yeah, I actually had made that suggestion. And I was just reading, uh, would have been about two months ago in the dispositor, and I will, look, I will investigate this. There's some kind of proposal with Georgian Bay to include Manitouland Island uh uh as a strategic planning um body. And and so I remember reading about it, and I will definitely see if I could search out. I can't remember if it was a Chamber of Commerce that had commented or. But it was around a a big proposal, and they wanted to include Manitouland Island with Georgian Bay. And this could go on, you know, in in their purview.
Uh, yeah, I think we're gonna get some paper and pens so that you could sign up if you want to volunteer time to help us do these other things. Um, with only a small staff, we're really limited to how much we can get done. This actually, maybe it doesn't look like it. This has been a huge amount of work. It's, and when you read it, your head feels like it's going to explode. So it's, it's not fun. So um we're gonna have a pen and paper, and if you want to join us in this fight, then maybe we'll get organized and reach out.
Uh, my name is Philomena and we have a camp on Wabikishik. So you asked us a question earlier, uh, you know, what do you want us to do? So I'm gonna tell you what I'm gonna do. So thank you very much to all the people who showed up, because it takes lots of guts to come and face normal people. So I just wanted to take one moment, though, to to just acknowledge, uh, there's nobody here from the government, really. I mean, I understand you are not the government, but this is not your baby, because we live here. And I mean, I guess you live here too, but this is, this is, you've been here for three months. So we have this whole understanding that when we throw something away, it goes away. But it doesn't go away. It just goes to the ground or it goes somewhere else, and then it becomes this problem much later. So the first thing I'm going to do is I'm going to take responsibility for my own. I know my children don't like when I say this. So we need to take responsibility for that. And we need to be grateful for the people that are coming to this point where they're saying, okay, this is what the situation is, so thank you again. So they kindly gave us these addresses. Now, I am a retired school teacher, and Stephen Leche was the Minister of Education, so I've already talked to him already once. So I am going to write an email, and even if you could give us a phrase that pays, and I wanna CC you so that you know that I sent it. So I need to be responsible for my own. Yeah, you said. And I need to make sure that I'm going to do my part. Now, I did not raise my hand for wanting to protest, but that's not a bad idea. And I don't know any lawyers, but I'm sure some of you do. So we all need to take our own personal responsibility, because once upon a time, when mines were doing this, they were giving us jobs. They were providing things for us. Yeah, there were some other things that they provided us that now, decades later, we don't like anymore. So let's just make, you know, it's that whole Mulan principle, a simple grain of rice makes a difference, or something like that. I don't know, some Disney wisdom. So I hope you look at your email. I'm going to send a very short phrase that pays. I don't know what that phrase is. If we could even craft something now, just so that it's a, it's a stem for us to start on. And then we send the email and we start this, we we give these gentlemen and this uh this woman here, gentlewoman, uh, support, because they're going to go back, they're going to do their jobs, they're going to talk to the ministers. They're gonna say we were with a bunch of normal people that are concerned about this norm, this naturally occurring radioactive material, because we don't wanna be naturally occurring radioactive material ourselves.
Funny induction. More specific, like something like, hi, I live in this area, there's going to be niobium coming. Will you buy my house? If you will not buy my house, why not? Yeah, okay, that's a good phrase that pays, because they just need to have the information brought to the force, because you've done your job. Now we need to do ours, but all the suggestions that people gave you, you know, contacting other municipalities, contacting the Ontario Federation, not sleeping for the next three weeks, because you're gonna be so busy before August. But I mean, I know this is not necessarily what you signed up for, but we need to empower them to do these things now.
Yeah, another thing that might make you angrier as well is, you know, it almost seems strategic that it took so long to get the answers, and now we're getting them in the summer, right? Like, so it it really does seem like a great stall tactic to just then be like, okay, and here it comes in. Um, so I think that's the end of our uh comments. Normal, always kitchen, hire a lawyer as entire CEO, somebody's gonna jump on this. I don't know if we can legally do that, um, but we could start a group that enables people to.
Yeah, somebody here you guys like, you have both, you pick a couple people and pick someone.
Well, it's, it's time and money, right? You know? So if you're willing to volunteer your time and effort, and I don't know, we'll talk about the GoFundMe. I don't know what our available, what we're capable of doing. So if you're willing to volunteer your time and effort and I don't know, we'll talk about the GoFundMe. I don't know what our available or what we're capable of doing. Um but I just wanted to, uh as a wrap up here, if we could hear some final words from France. Uh Jelena, who has been with us from the very beginning and has been a great support. And you don't know this, but we're not really experienced politicians. So we're more um experienced politicians to help us navigate through all of the many different levels of government and it's tricky and we're grateful for the help.
Thank you. So we all heard a lot of important information. That was hard to listen to, to watch the screen and see that. Basic questions were not answered clearly, that basic reassurance was not given. Um that leaves us when, hey, there's some information they don't want to share with us and they cannot tell us that it's safe. Otherwise, they would. Um so you have an important decisions to make. Your council has made recommendations to you um that. That we've all listened to. Um I think listening to your council members and what they recommend makes sense. Some really good ideas came out of this group tonight. And those also make sense and are worth pursuing. Once the decision is made, there's a number of steps that you've said. Um they are open to sending it to Sarnia. Sarnia can handle it. They can handle really, really toxic radioactive waves down there. That's kind of step number one. Let's send the stuff there. Kind of end of story. But it's not the end of the story. You have a tailings right now. Where the cover is not thick enough to be safe. It hasn't been thick enough to be safe for close to a decade. You now know this. You speak with, if we live in a democracy, if you speak with one voice, if you all ask for the same objective. You will get there. You have to feel safe. We know that right now the tailings covers are not safe. At a minimum, the government has to do this. The government owns this tailing, the government of Ontario is responsible for that tailings. And they are failing at their jobs right now with consequences that. I'm not a bio, I'm not an expert, I'm not a doctor, I'm a politician. But I know that if they say that the radiation is eight times what it should be. That that's not what I want to hear. I don't want any radiation at all. I would feel way more comfortable with them saying, we'll do our jobs. We have to, this is a mine that belongs to the province of Ontario. The province of Ontario, do your job, put the cover on it so that we are all safe. And tell us that we are all safe. They cannot tell us that right now because we are not. It's as simple as that. So lots, lots to think about. We've learned a lot. Thank you again for the member of council for sharing all of that information with us. The job is not done. Uh the idea to go to a lawyer, I'm not a lawyer, but it seems to make sense to me also. Uh I will do some research and get back to council on that one to see what how we can help. But I don't make promises that I can't keep. Right now, we need everybody's shoulders to the wheel to make sure that it moves in the right direction. And that direction is keep everybody safe, keep our environment safe. And make sure that the radioactive tailings that exist are covered and safe.
Thank you. Ed stole my punchline for, oh, sure, come on up, yeah. I originally was agreed, he wasn't going to speak, so.
Hi, everyone. Uh this is the first I hear of all your concerns and issues. And at the federal level, I will find out what the Canadian Nuclear Association's role is in all this. And all I have to say is uh whether we all the uh government, levels of government should work together to find a solution. Whether it's municipal, provincial or federal. The stripe of political shouldn't matter. We should all work together and I will endeavor to do that. Thank you.
Well, let's wrap this up and you know, my punchline was going to be that, you know, if um some of it had to go to Kane Harbors in Sarnia, that why not send all of it? Ed beat me to it, but um yeah, that's if this is, there's a lot, if you really listen to the words. That the M T O and the Ministry of Mines have used with us, they often will contradict each other. And um it it just, it raises a lot of red flags. Thank you so much for your attendance. Thank you so much for our political leaders, for councils. Um for Renee as an expert, our First Nations um support, we're grateful for everyone. I'm great to see that you're excited about this. Please leave your name and email or phone number. And we will be able to organize something. We're going to have a council meeting just after this and discuss. Um what we can do next, um next step. So thank you so much for coming up.